Welcome to the December 7th, 2016 Regular School Committee meeting. We've got a tight agenda tonight, so if we could all stay on topic, keep our comments concise. At the end of the meeting, we'll be going into an executive session. We will not be returning to open session. So, citizens' comments, any citizens' comments? Anyone like to make a comment? We'll take nice comments, we'll take the best.[41.12][41.12][laughter] Okay. New business, Emergency Response Committee report out, and Donna Lindstrom, our district medical nurse, what do we call it, district special person.
Health and wellness coordinator.
Health and wellness coordinator. Is here to talk with us about the Emergency Response Committee, and it looks like you have some guests, so come on up to the table, please, everybody. As you go through, Donna, just let us know which document you'd like us to look at.
All right, absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Chief Warren Nelson, Bolton Police Department.
How are you doing? Michael Solisi, Sergeant, with the Stowe Police Department.
Thank you.
And our Lancaster police representative sends regrets that he was not able to attend. So, we're members of the Emergency Response Task Force that originated as a subcommittee of the School Health Advisory Council, which has been running for many years. And we formed that because there was some indication that we needed to do a little bit of standardization of our emergency response plans across the three towns. And so, we pulled this group together. We have representatives from all three towns, police, fire, and emergency medical services. We have parent representatives from each town. We have a lot of school personnel, so facilities for teachers, administrators, guidance department, nurses, and we have a student representative from the high school as well. Our SRO from the high school sat on the committee as well. And then we also had Kathy Tier last year sat with us, and this year Jennifer has joined us. So, it's a great group. I have to thank them publicly also for their support in all of this. Our first objective was to look at our emergency response plans. So evacuation, so fire evacuation, 911 emergency, so those are medical emergencies that happen in the buildings, and then lockdown and shelter in place. And so, we took a look at those three protocols, standardized them again across the district, and then presented them to the staff and taught the staff and made sure that everybody was on the same page, so everyone knows what they need to do in the case of an emergency. And those are renewed annually. We do that training annually. The second objective was to look at our emergency response plans overall, and that they're multifazal. So, there's prevention that we need to look at, then there's the immediate crisis intervention if there's a crisis going on. So, that's the emergency response that we did first. And then, we'll be looking at postvention. So, what do we do to help people recover after a crisis? So, part of the prevention, we felt was very important to look at, was the security of the buildings, of all seven buildings in the district, and to make sure that we have the security systems in place that can keep our kids and staff as safe as we possibly can. Really more of an enhancement, because obviously, we do things like locking all of our external doors, we have cameras in place, we have, again, this training for staff, we have, we're reading buzzing people into the building, making sure we're identifying them. So, there's already a good level of security. But we thought we would take a look to be sure that we are doing everything we can, and then determine whether or not there were other things that we could do, sort of, to enhance those things. And I think most, if not all, of the recommendations that we came up with actually generated from our local law enforcement that came forward and said, here are some systems and some ideas and protocols that we should really take a look at. And then, we reached out and talked to other school districts, both in the state and some out of state. We had some experts weigh in on some of the things that we were talking about. And then, we also looked, we did some research on some information that came out of, for example, the Sandy Hook Commission. So, ultimately, we have four recommendations that we're putting forward for consideration in adding them into a long-term crisis safety plan, that whether they're accepted, perhaps to phase in over a couple of years, depending where we feel that we want to start. So, the four recommendations, I believe we have them there, they're titled, "The NRSD Emergency Response Task Force Building Security Recommendations." And there are four here. So, we just decided, in the interest of time, that we would divide them up, so everybody could really concentrate on just one or two. So, I'll take the first one, which is locking of doors accessing academic areas. This came out of the Sandy Hook Commission report, and was really the number-one recommendation because of the research that they did on all of the active shooter, school intruder events that have happened across the country in the past years. And that they felt that having doors locked and either being able to very, very quickly lock them or keeping them locked at all times can significantly increase the safety of the occupants of those areas. With delay, obviously, entrance, they found that in all of their studies, that there was not one single event where a room was breached by an intruder if that door was locked. So, that, our understanding is that actually, some of the buildings in the district already use this as a practice. It's something that some of them already do, but we're recommending that it become a standard practice across the district in every building for that reason. And Mike is going to talk about the communications audit.
So, what we're looking for is an audit of some communications that go on between the school and the police department and within the school. One of them being, the police department, the police officers that are in the building need to be in communication with the outside of the police, outside of the school. Sometimes when we're in a building, especially like in the show, I know Bolton has this issue, is that when they're in a building, they can't have radio communication outside, so they don't know what's going on, and they can't get information out, which is some vital information that they could be getting out if there was an emergency situation. Also, the school, people who work in the schools, such as principals, when they're outside, or vice principals, when they're outside of the office and they're trying to get information back through the office, the radios are not working either, because they can't get through, and there needs to be some sort of audit done on that. Yeah, also, the other part of that, too, is that we want to look at the interoperability between the police department and the schools, where we can program the school radios with our frequency and our frequency with the school radios, so we're not carrying like two or three radios with us, and we can easily switch over and talk and listen at what's going on, and we can get help to where help needs to be. Part of the communication, Donna said, would be cameras. I can tell you, on the Stowe side of things, we have two, I'm sorry, one recreation facility right now that we have as, in our cruisers, and at our dispatch, we can access the cameras from there. Our fire, new fire station community center, we can access the cameras from our cruisers and from our police station. We're looking to get access also from, to the schools, too. It's just something's going on. Our dispatcher can easily log in, see what's going on, and direct the officers to wherever they need to be.
So, are you saying that the schools across the district do not have that ability right now?
I'm saying, in Stowe, I don't know, Bolton does not have, we don't have that access to log in from outside. Like, I believe that we need to get a, from what it was explained to me, a VPN tunnel to get access, but we would like remote access from outside and log in, which, you know, I know our security systems can be set up for, you know, specific username, password rights, so the school, as the administrator of that camera system, would know exactly who would log in, when they log in, and what they were looking at. So, you'd have ultimate control over it. However, we would still be able to access, either in an emergency, or, I can't tell you how many times I've logged into where I've seen an officer checking a car at the recreation facility, and I can log in, and they say they're all set, but I can just keep an eye on them. Okay, that officer's really all set. And the dispatchers do that, too, all the time for us. It's very helpful, especially when we have such a large distance.
So, what's the implication with the current camera system, though? Because I would think you would have to replace the cameras, is that not the case?
You know, I don't know what your infrastructure looks like on that, or how the logistics to do that. I know that some, some of your admin can log in right now and check.
The SRO at the high school can do that, on his computer, he can, he can get into it. So, it must be an internet connection.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, we'd obviously have to create that access to get into it.
And it would be something that the audit would explain and come up with the solutions across the district.
Okay. Sorry for the interruption.
Ask questions, you know, please. So, that was the, what the audit really would be, is the radios, how we can communicate more effectively within our, within the building to outside the building, and how we can more effectively communicate with the staff, and we need to, also, on the cameras. Do you want me to just go right into the?
Well, I was also, especially with the, I know that there is a line item for additional security cameras, at least at the high school.
There was, yeah.
And before we did anything with that, we would want to know how that would interact. There'd be no point in getting something that wouldn't facilitate this as well.
And I can tell you, part of this task force that we do is then we break off, and we always do site-specific. So, I meet with Center School and Hale School, and we go over our safety concerns or issues that we feel that are, we need to bring back to the task force here. But like, I could tell you that some of the cameras also need to be addressed at some of the schools, and Center School for one. It has a great view of the parking lot, the main parking lot, but it's so far away, you know, something that would be, you know, either able to zoom in, or something that would be, you know, closer, that we could actually use.
I think we brought that, this up last fiscal year, with the security cameras and the radio. It was a bidirectional amplifier that would have been wired into the building at the show, but so that we could communicate to it from the police station. So, I think that just got tabled from the budgets, and hopefully, will be brought back at some point, so we could possibly.
And I just want to mention, Chief, you and I've already had this discussion earlier this year, and very, very respectful of that. And this is, we also, at the same time, we talked about the repeater, right? Did you want to maybe say a word or two about that, too, the repeater at the high school? I think that's what we were thinking, is that?
Well, that's the bidirectional amplifier.
Yeah.
What it does is, you wire up the whole building, and they put a couple of receivers in the building with an antenna on the roof, and it just amplifies the portable from the building to the repeater at our tower site.
And Chief, you also were very gracious this year to give our buildings, lend us, until we could afford to buy them, a special little piece of equipment. Would you like to speak about that?
Yes, we, I've been still waiting for the approval. So, once I get the approval, I've got enough spare portables right now that I can give each school in Bolton, each principal, if there's three, give them each a portable, so that if there is an emergency with their jump kit, or go-kit, whatever they call it, we can take that portable with them to the safe room and communicate directly right to the law enforcement officers that are coming to the scene.
We do have that, our principals in Stowe have our.
And Lancaster does as well.
Okay. So, Bolton needs.
I'll have him over there, talk tomorrow.
What are they going to?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, we're good.
Well, we have to purchase them, because.
No, no, no.
He's got them. He's lending these to us right now.
Yes.
Until we can.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on, wait, wait, wait. Okay. I want to understand, so everybody else can understand. Bolton doesn't have these, so you're going to lend them to us. But you said that Stowe has them.
We gave, we gave our radios to the Stowe schools.
And did Lancaster.
Oh, so, all three police officers have loaned these to the school district?
Yes.
For police department?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that way, at least now, they can communicate. If they know something's going on in the back of the building, they can get on the radio and say, go there, especially if they're looking on the camera, or if they're on scene. They can tell us, go right to where the activity is.
So, if we purchased our own, and this is, Neil's going to roll his eyes at me, because he's more technologically astute than I am, it would still work with yours?
Yes, I've already checked with the radio supplier. Your frequency right now at the high school is pretty close to ours, so on your radio, we could program our frequency, when you buy them, with our frequency, so that only a select few, like the superintendent and the principals may want to have a portable, so that they could get right into communications with the law enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mike, I just want to speak, too. I know that we've already had an incident this year with the very issue that you're talking about, with the wide-angle camera.
Correct.
That we couldn't zoom in on to see exactly what we were looking for in this particular situation. So, I certainly, I just want to affirm the frustration that that causes for us.
Right.
So, I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Did you have one, you want to? Yes, I'm going to continue one. So, the, so part of what the police chief allows me to do is go to a lot of training. One of them was down at the school resource officer conference this last past year. And I found that there was a vendor, and it's called Raptor Technologies. And what they do is, they have a software and hardware program which tracks the incoming visitors to the school. So, that made me go back and look at how we log people that are coming into our school. And I found that, you know, most of it is the sign-in book, and people sign their name, their time in, time out, and they grab the visitor's badge. Well, I can tell you, when you see my signature, you have no idea what I write, because I type better than I write. So, what happened with this system is, it's a scanner, it's a CPU, and it's a printer. It's a dynamo limo printer. And the individual will come in, they scan their license or a government ID, and it just pulls their photo off their license, and it takes their name, and it puts it on to the label, and it prints out the label, and it has their picture on it, says visiting Center School, and the date, and their photo on it. So, everybody knows who they are and that they checked in. A few things that go along with this, it actually can connect to Power School, which can send a message to whoever's behind the desk, because it's not always the same secretary, because sometimes they take a day off, and it could send an alert, so if there is any custodial issues, it could send an alert. If someone's trying to pull a kid out that's not supposed to have access. It also checks the National Sex Offender Registry, and it can send an alert to the person who's monitoring this, and hey, listen, this person's not supposed to be in the school, or this person is on this list. No, that doesn't mean you're not going to grant access, it could just give you a heightened sense of security on who's inside your building. The other part, too, that I talked to the fire department on, which is what they liked about it, is that we can pull a list of who's in the building and who's not, and who's not in the building. So, and we can do this remotely. So, if there is a fire, and we have to have accountability for everybody who's in the building, we can know if someone did grab that list that was at the, near the front door, could be in the office, well, now we can pull up a list of saying, hey, here are all the visitors that are in the school, we've accounted for them all, and we don't have to send any firefighters back in. So, that was a really positive thing that they liked about it. The other thing, there are a lot of modules that go along with this. They don't all have to be purchased at once. If you find something that you like and you want to add on to it, great. One of them was the, I just learned about it, was their emergency response module, which is basically if people had to evacuate in a non-controlled manner, which is not like a fire drill, and people are scattered everywhere, and the teachers have their kids, it automatically, since it's linked to Power School, pulls in their roster for their classroom. And if parents are, if they ended up in a spot where parents ended up taking their kids, it automatically, the teacher can log who took their student, like which parent picked them up, and it sends that information back to the admin who can log in from a remote site, which is really big for us. If there's an incident at a certain location, we're, our command post will be away from that location, and we want to collect information remotely. My time.
Apologize.
So, we could, we could real-time monitor who's picked up, where people are, and people would have that communication available. Another great thing about this company is that they will allow us 30 days free. They'll basically give us everything and say, here you go, try it out. If you like it, great, keep it, and then, you know, the cost will come later, and if you don't like it, return it, and that'll be it. So, that would.
They include training on their system when you purchase it? Is there a fee?
No training.
No?
Training is included. You buy one license per building, and so if you have more than one setup per building, that's how they do the costs, it's per building. So, it's not, so if you had like two entrances in one building, you want to put them there.
And you mentioned there are modules. Do you folks have recommendations for the modules that you would?
To start with, the visitor management module, for sure. And then, this, this emergency one is actually one that we didn't explore, so, but I think that.
We'd have to look into that.
We need to look at that a little bit as well.
They have the student module, where students can check in, or party, early release. Again, it, you know, there's different ones that you can, that we'd have to look at, but I think, like she, Donna was saying, the visitor one is a great way to start, see how it works. I know the Center School would be up to, you know, trying, so, and like I said, they said they could ship it out and set it up. Any school would have to be set up, you know.
And I think the visitor mode does a check of sex offender.
Yeah.
So, if that person possibly is a sex offender, it goes through the national registry and will check when they, when they license.
And for us, that would be, in Massachusetts, that would mainly be a level three. You know, because Mass has different levels, one, two, and three, and that would, the level threes are nationally registered, but twos and ones are not, and that has a whole set of technicals on it.
So, it wouldn't, so you have to explain that.
I didn't want to give any, like, so Massachusetts, there are level one, two, and three sex offenders. Level ones you'll never know about, because their information is never broadcast anywhere, and you can't, and you don't.
Okay, it's more, okay.
Okay. And level two is the only way you can get that information, is if you as a specific person come in and request that information about either a location or a specific individual. And level threes are the information that we put out to the public, and to all agencies. So, that's the ones in Massachusetts that we'd get. But if you get somebody who crosses over, it gets special. So, if you get the ones that cross over from a different, like, from like New Hampshire coming down, they may be in it, and it's not a catch-all for 100% of them, but it'll be a large percentage.
Okay.
The only thing I was going to say is that, you know, I mean, if you go to Minnetman, or you go to Mytech, or either the Voc Tech schools, they generally have these. My concern, though, is that, you know, someplace like the high school, where you've got the dual doors going in, you can, that'd be an easier setup. It'll be a more difficult setup for us than some of these other buildings.
Absolutely.
So, I just want to make sure that we're thinking of this when we're thinking of the price tag of, it's not just this, it's where you actually house this and the person that's doing it. So, I just want to make sure that we keep that in the back of our minds.
There's no labor represented, no labor represented, but yeah. The numbers are the gas, don't they?
No, I, yeah.
I didn't hear what you said.
There's no labor represented in your pricing. It's just the product.
Do you have money?
Yes, well, they, the.
Installation is what's up, huh?
Yeah, it's just.
It's, I mean, it would be a whole process, of course. I think that, I think the only purpose for tonight is just to provide the recommendations of it. I mean, from here on in, we would just have to look, look at the bigger issue and how we could do it, you know.
How to implement it.
How to implement it, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah, and did you guys coordinate with the tech committee at all? Because a lot of this has to go through the technology, and I know that we have issues where the technology hasn't been, there's no Friday brand, and it's a little slow, and there's some issues with the cameras and some of the security stuff.
And I would think, you want to answer that, or?
Well, I'm just going to say, that's a much broader topic, I think, than right here. I think what we want to know from you folks tonight, it was exactly what you're doing, give us the key recommendations, and then, we need to go back now and see on our part what we want to do or how we want to approach this.
Our final recommendation is on a product called NightLock. As Donna explained, we're trying to beef up the security of the schools, which are doing a fabulous job, but occasionally, a dual lock may not lock properly, a teacher may forget to lock something. This is a quick, in less than 15 seconds, a teacher-student can take the metal part that locks the door from the plastic container, that can be on the wall, on the desk, somewhere close to the door, and slide it into this receiver. And there's a hole in the floor and a plate at the door. And what this does, there was a video online, that if you look this up tonight, that somebody spent six minutes with a sledgehammer and a halogen trying to open the door, didn't budge. It prevented. So, that's time that's delaying the person. And I think in the Alice training that they're coming up with, that the high school may or may not come into that someday, is they're telling kids to tie, tie the mechanical devices of the arms with their belt, or bring on the desks and pile them in front of the door, so nobody can get through. With this simple device, that takes less than 15 seconds to put down, it's, they can walk away from that door, and nobody will ever get through that door unless they spend a lot of time trying to rip that door off its hinges. So, we feel this is fabulous for the cost that this, I think the cost did go up, because we've taken a little bit of time to get this to the floor. But still, it's a cost-effective measure that could certainly save people's lives in the end. And it's a second, a redundant system, that if the door didn't lock, teachers got something that they could throw in this door that is going to keep the kids safe and help anybody in.
So, a question, could that also be used for connecting doors between classrooms?
It can. I don't think we quoted it that way.
It didn't.
No, I think we were just using the main door for that.
Because if the, if the doors to the hallways all had the barricade or were locked, then that prevents anyone from getting in through the. And we, we ran this also by our fire department, and they said, obviously, for the purpose that we're, that it absolutely is okay to, normally, we wouldn't barricade doors, but in this particular situation, obviously, they'd leave.
I think the initial part is to get the main doors done, and then, if we have to reevaluate for the interior doors. But if all the exterior doors are locked with this device, then they can't get to that interior door.
Okay. Sorry, we were just discussing.
I was, I was just saying how much I am so appreciative of all of this. And I'm just thinking, too, I don't know, I'm not sure if there are other questions on this, but I do have a wrap-up that I know that I'd like to bring forward a couple of comments.
All right, so let me ask if this, Jen?
Sorry. This is a question I had that I came up with after our last meeting, so I apologize, I didn't ask it then. The system of keeping all of the academic doors locked, does somebody have a master key? Because what happens if the teacher has a fit, or, you know, some, something happens, and you've got a bunch of five-year-olds in the room who can't get out?
Yes.
Because there, so there is a mechanism for master keys.
Administrators all have master keys.
Okay.
Excellent.
No, but the barricade is only going to go up if there's actually an active shooter.
And there's actually, there is actually a device that every school gets to, the visitor that can release it from, from the outside.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So, can you, let's just do this really quick, I tried to write it down. So, bidirectional amplifier. Actually, what, I'm going to, could you guys tell me what your priority list would be for the school, since you're the ones who are in law enforcement and you've been in our schools?
If I have to say, the radios are a big thing. And that's only specific to one school. I would say, if anything, this would be, for district-wide, would be that for me.
Yeah, in order of preference, I would go with communications, and then, cameras would be a priority. The, the Raptor system, the NightLock, and most of the, most of the people are locking their doors anyway, but that would be the last one.
But I don't think our doors all have locks in Bolton.
In the school?
Do our doors all have locks? They do?
They do.
Okay. Well, that's good. So, you said the communications, so the bidirectional amplifier and the radios for Bolton, and then the security cameras for everybody? And then, NightLock and Raptor?
Yep.
Okay. So, we have that, and Donna, you've given us cost estimates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The one we've collected, yes. So, that's in the package.
I think we're going to have to come back and discuss this at another meeting, because I think, yep, Neil?
Can you just point out the one thing? Because we've talked a lot about, like, active shooter or things like this, but, I mean, the communication also goes to somebody who's hurt, somebody that's having a medical emergency, and if they're on the other side of the building, and you're trying to communicate with radios that aren't working, it could mean, it could mean someone's safety in a very serious way, right? I mean, if I can't get that, I just wanted to kind of point that part out, because that's sort of.
And I also think that it's important with the communication issue, what really is being recommended is that we have a full audit of the entire system. Not a particular thing yet, but a full audit of the entire system, so we know what's happening in Bolton, what's happening in Lancaster, and what's happening in Stowe, what's happening at the high school, and recommendations thereof, is what, how we can make it coordinated. I know there's been some issues with Stowe radios working with Bolton radio, you know, I mean, there's just a lot of kind of.
There's a lot of what you're saying.
There's a lot of moving parts to that, that I think that having the expert communication audit would help us figure out.
Absolutely.
And some of it might not be a problem, some of it we might not have thought about.
I just wonder if that audit, whatever we decide to do, if that audit's going to push us out another year.
Well, some of it, like, the radios coming from Bolton will bring Bolton into compliance with Lancaster and Stowe. What the audit would help say is that if we're going to, if the district is going to buy or purchase radios, they should be consistent between the three, you know, that kind of thing. I think that some of the short. I think that some of the short-term stuff we can do already. But I think ad hoc, trying to put stuff in.
Right.
Without somebody say, you know, who really knows this, saying, okay, this is, this is what you need to look at, this is a priority, we've dealt with this. These are the problems that come up, I think would be, I think we might end up spending money we wouldn't need to, or, and, or, and in things that aren't as important as, as might come up in an audit.
Yeah, and I think to your, and I think to your point, we've seen over this past year that when we make purchases, we wanna know what the situation is before we spend the money.
Right.
So, yeah, your point is well-taken. But I wanna, I think on behalf of all of us, thank all of you for lending us your radios. That's a big, I did not know that, I don't know many people knew that, so thank you for doing that. And I think the next step is, we need to take this back and discuss what it is that we wanna do, and likely it may have to be in a, in another session. But thank you for serving on the committee with Donna, thank you for taking care of our staff and our kids.
Thank you for listening.
Really appreciate your efforts.
We do wanna give Donna a plug, she's been fabulous to work with.
She is fabulous.
She is.
Yes.
Chief, just before you, you go, this is not why you came here tonight, but I, I also wanna echo our thanks to our police departments and Donnie, you have done amazing job. That's been a lot of people to corral, too, to keep on target here, and I'm, I'm so appreciative of that. But, but Chief, I just wanna say, we lost our SRO this week in, in Eric Kupos, and I, I wanna say we had a wonderful celebration for him the other day. I know that you attended, as did several of us, actually, I know.
Police officers.
Yeah, the police, your, your whole team was there. I mean, and to stand in that room, at that cafeteria where we had probably seven, at least seven hundred kids at that point in time, to just short of a standing ovation for him, oh my goodness, like, the emotion that went, ran through that cafeteria. He was so well-liked, and he did everything an SRO, we would want him to do. He built the relationships with the kids. The number of kids, and the, the folks in the Best Buddies program that came to hug him, and there's the right, like, the, the regular football players that came to hug him, and the, it, it was just such a cool experience. And I am so grateful to the leadership that he brought, that, that, that you bring and, and helped to direct. And he was just an incredible asset to, to our district, and I'm so appreciative of that. The fact that we have the kinda relationship that we do with our police force, not only in Bolton, but, but everywhere else. But I mean, the SRO was specific to Bolton, and he was just an amazing young man, and I think that Drake has a real asset that, that they're getting in.
They are getting a very valuable asset. We were very proud of him, he's done a great job up there. Like you said, he's built those relationships with the kids, with the staff, the administration, all, all over. And we, we are sad to see him go, but very happy he's doing, you know, a greater and better thing in his career. So again, yes, I'm, I'm sorry to see him go, but you, you do have Casey now. And she's following right in his footsteps, and she, she'll do just as good a job.
She'll do a great job. You know, it was interesting, I tweeted out a couple of the pictures that, that we took that day. And of everything I've, I've put out on Twitter since I've been in the district, those pictures got retweeted and retweeted and liked, and it, and it was just really, really cool to see. So special thank you to, to all that you do, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don, and Lee. Appreciate it, thanks for coming in. Donna, you have another item you're up on.
Thank you for the curriculum.
This is Jane Richards, she is our health education teacher from Florence Sawyer School in Bolton. And she represents the middle school health education teachers across the district. Our other two again, send regrets they weren't able to come. So we, we just wanted to let you know about a process that we've been going through over the last several months, looking at our eighth grade human growth and development curriculum. The health teachers have been using health.com for about ten years, a little more than ten years. And basing their units and their, they're teaching their lessons on this, this health.com model. And over the last couple of years have been realizing that the, the curriculum is really leaving behind the.
It's sorely out of date at this point.
The updating that has, that really needs to happen. And so they asked if they would be able to do a search of new curricula, and do a comparison and determine whether there was another one that we could use that seemed to work better for the needs of our students. They looked at our youth risk behavior survey results, we do have eighth graders who do report that they are participating in sexual activity even before their eighth grade year. So that's one of the concerns, obviously, that we have, that we're making sure that we're providing information for them that they need, and updated current information. So through, again, through researching, I think, six or so programs.
I think there was six programs that we looked at.
They found the three Rs is, seem to align best with what we felt our students needed. They align with national standards. The Massachusetts.
The frameworks.
Frameworks.
And the National Health Education Standards. So the people who actually wrote this curriculum were on the team that wrote the National Human Sexuality Education Standards, K to twelve. So they put together this program, it, they offer it free of charge. All the materials, all the, the links, all the videos, all the slideshows, everything is provided free of charge. Because they are, they are, they are so intent on making sure that the youth of today have the information they need to keep themselves healthy.
You even went as far as looking at the lessons that you have been teaching that are required to, to be included in your curriculum. And matched them with these new lessons.
Yes. So the, the curriculum is a K to twelve, which we can't teach all of it, we wouldn't teach anything else at that point. But we looked at the lessons, grade six to eight, and pulled the lessons that aligned with what we had already been teaching, and just supplemented, you know, some of the skills pieces, which we had been doing. And this curriculum actually offered the skill piece and some of the practice parts right in the curriculum itself. So we just replaced what we were already doing with the most current and updated information.
And it follows a social-emotional learning model as well, which is something that we've, we're really looking to try to infuse into all of our health education across the district and across all the grade levels. And so there, there, it's language and skill-building and self-efficacy and all sorts of skills that are included in there that can really help kids. Decision-making and.
Analyzing the influence and, and refusal skills, which is my favorite. Being able to say no to a variety of things, and that skill set and that practice, because those are the life skills, twenty-first century skills. So those are the skills our kids are going to need all their lives. So allowing them to practice, and they get to practice it in different situations. So that gives them, you know, a broader scope, you know, that those, that skill can be used, whether it's talking, you know, saying no to sex, or no to drugs, or no to, you know, something else, that they, they get a chance to practice all those.
So what SEL is, is?
Yes. Social emotional learning.
So there's a document in the packet, I think everyone hopefully has had a chance to look at the, the curriculum overview. Can I, can we take questions from the group?
Sure.
Does anybody have questions from, I'm gonna call you Ms. Edwards.
For our help.
For Jane.
For Jane.
It's hard.
Neil, you've got a question?
So is, this is something that's already in place?
We have a, we have a curriculum that we're currently using, the health.com curriculum.
You haven't substituted, made the substitutions, actually, put them into practice at this point?
No, we have not.
Okay, so I guess my only question is, is there anything that's like Firestorm-worthy? Do you know what I mean? I mean, is, or we just?
We, we look to, to, to update the materials, not change what we were teaching. You know, so it, abstinence, you know, is the first best choice, is still our message. It's just a matter of, you know, some of the materials were so outdated and so focused in one direction that they weren't, they weren't really covering all the things that the kids are faced with today.
Yeah, so they were outdated.
They were very outdated, yes.
Yeah, Nicole?
Is grade eight just when we, when we teach this stuff, the majority of the stuff, so that's why we're focused on grade eight?
Right.
Jen?
So I know my eighth grader, one of her complaints when she did, went through this program was that there was no alternative sexual orientation included in the discussion. Is that part of this, or is it still just heterosexual relationships and, and the implications thereof?
The curriculum that we've been using, that we have permission to use, didn't talk about that.
No, that was her complaint.
Yes.
So.
We could, there are lessons that could be added to that if.
That they have that ability with this?
With this, with this curriculum.
So this looks at today's world?
Today's world.
Okay.
Okay, that would, thank you.
That was a good question.
No, that was always MS, I shouldn't mention it.
Okay, that's, that's good.
We also, as, as in any particularly health curriculum, but in, in any courses, lessons, units that we provide, parents always can opt their children out, and that's just the, it's a district policy. Parents can opt their students out of one lesson and the entire unit, and the teachers provide alternative activities and classes for them.
So to, to that comment, then, if parents have a question and they wanna see what this new curriculum is gonna look like, will you be able to share that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, it's all online, it's all available now.
Okay.
This, in this. Well, yeah, so we'll have the, we have the. The watered-down version, as, you know, because you don't wanna look at the K to twelve, so many lessons out there. And we've modified some of the lessons to make them fit. But that stuff will all be on, we put it on our own websites, we have it available. I usually have it available during conferences, because I send my letter out to, so early, so the parents can come in and see that if they want to. And the other, I know the other two teachers do that also.
Okay.
And it is also available online, and there's like, there's a, at least with the old system, there was a whole video that you could watch that kind of ran through the process and what was taught and what was the implications, and, and I know you could opt out of specific things or the entire program if you so chose.
So I, I just, as a child that's gone through the things recently, I remember the, the opt-out options that came out, but I don't recall any referral to the lesson online. Like, it might be online, but I don't know if there's actually a referral, like, if you wanna check the lesson beforehand, prior to making the decision whether you wanna opt out or not, you can go to and direct them to where they could actually review the lesson?
The parents?
The parents, yeah. It may already be in there, and I just may not recall.
It was more of an overall, it was more of a general, the whole program.
Well, we had overall, we had overall information, but the specific lessons are always available, and the parent just needs to email, let us know, and we'll make that, the materials available.
You have to request it.
Well, and now that we have, we can actually post all those lessons.
In this, I think, in this situation.
The old system was more of an overall thing, and you could specifically ask, so when you're discussing X, are you gonna discuss Y and Z? Then you opted out if you chose.
So you're saying if this new one will be online, and you don't have to request it?
No, she's, I think, what she, I'm just.
We don't, I also don't want my, the kids to, to get ahead of us.
Right.
You know, so.
I'm gonna put it in context, some of that stuff.
But, yeah.
I mean, if somebody's gonna opt out, you don't wanna find, you don't wanna them opt out in the middle of it, I mean.
Oh, no, that's why we let parents know, we had, like, the letter, the letter has to go home. That's a state law that requires us to send a letter home. And with the information, if they want to see the curriculum at all, they just need to let us know.
Okay, so you still have to request it, okay. It's the, but you have to request it, and then you'll make it available.
You had, you had a comment?
No, I just wanna thank you for the amount of work that you've done on this. I, I know that certainly Donna's kept me apprised at every step of the way, and I'm just so appreciative. I think you were very, very thorough, I think your group was very, very thorough with this, and I'm very comfortable with what you're moving forward. So certainly, I support the fact that we, we move forward with this change as curriculum.
So are you looking for a vote from us?
We should have, I believe that that's what happened in the past, I think that you've taken a motion to, to move it forward, to allow the teachers to do it.
Is it bringing more voting?
So it's, no, it's, I think it's gonna be pretty, I, I will move that we authorize the adoption of the R, is it R or not?
Three S's.
Three Rs, the three R human sexuality program for the K up at the eighth grade.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
A second?
Thanks, Nicole, and anybody have any more questions?
Can I, do I, do I understand that you're going to be adding a segment that has to deal with gender identity and association?
We can, we, obviously, we will be adding that piece in, because that's not what we've been teaching in the past.
But that, we, I think to Kathy's point, she just wants to make sure that will be, yeah.
If we're voting for it, is it as is, or with the understanding that those topics will be included?
Absolutely.
Okay, terrific.
Can I get one point, because if you add that, and I'm not saying that I'm against having that in there, but I'm just trying to play what's Joe Citizen think, okay? So that could be a flashpoint for some people.
It could be a flashpoint for some parents.
And so where I'm going with this is, maybe, and perhaps you will, provide a syllabus or some sort of information that goes to the parents so that they understand what the topics are, maybe not the actual course material, but the topics, so then they can actually make the decision, do I wanna request this particular thing, or hold them out of the class, but maybe not choose to opt them out of everything. Do, do you know what I mean?
Sure, we can do that.
Just, I think that avoids that potential.
No, there's definitely gonna be parents who are uncomfortable with their children learning about homosexual activity, and so therefore they would opt out.
For anyone but themselves, yeah.
Or, or other sexual activities.
Okay, so the point is that you would, you will prepare, to Neil's point, a topical list of agenda items in the program to parents when you send out your, this is our program, if you wanna opt out, you can, well before the, the year starts. Okay, Kathy?
Just, just to be clear, I'm not talking about the sexual activity part of it, which has to be a part of it, because it is. I'm talking about the understanding of things like transgender.
Yeah.
The, the gender identity that someone might have as additional topics. So it might include the things you're talking about, but also include the issues that kids need to build an understanding about.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Good one, anybody have any other comments before we vote? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you so much for your efforts, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And Donna, are you done with us?
As she is. Do you have something else?
Certainly, we had fifteen minutes, and we have forty-five left.
Yes, I know, I know, that's okay, we, it was all good stuff, thank you so much.
Thank you, Donna.
All right, FY15 invoice payment request, Pat Maroni, wanna?
Oh, actually, there's an invoice that was for.
Actually, Pat, can you please come to the table?
Sure, thank you. It was an invoice for tutoring services. We had a student at the high school at the end of fiscal year fifteen that received tutoring in the hospital. And typically, the hospital arranges the tutoring, it's part of their program. And the invoice did not make it into the year-end process in fifteen.
From the high school?
From the high school, yes. So I'm requesting that the bill be paid from fiscal year seventeen funds.
Anybody have any questions? Somebody wanna make a motion with Elliot?
I move that we pay this bill from Phoenix House for fiscal year fifteen out of fiscal year seventeen funds for seven hundred fifty dollars.
Seconded, Neil seconded, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you all, Pat, thank you so much for coming. Substitute pay rates. And Anne Marie Stojka, our director of HR, thank you so much. So we're gonna turn the floor over to you.
In the packet, the first sheet on this topic is a chart that shows the substitute teacher pay rates for the surrounding communities. You can see our, our daily rate for substitute teachers and for substitute instructional assistants right now is seventy-five dollars, which puts us kind of in there, but on the low side of seventy-five dollars. Also, it's, it's kind of funny that we have the same pay rate for the person who's gonna be the substitute teacher, and the same, and as we pay the person who's gonna be the substitute instructional assistant within the classroom. It's hard to find subs, it's hard to find subs for every school district in Massachusetts. My listserv of personnel administrators in the schools is always a buzz, and they haven't got any ideas, and nobody does, you know, it's, it's just hard to do. But in order to do two things, in order to put us a little bit higher on this chart with the, with the pay, so maybe people would be drawn to our town as opposed to the other towns. And also, we, we're proposing. so maybe people will be drawn to our town as opposed to the other towns, and also, we're proposing a two-tiered system of pay, so that the instructional assistants would continue to get seventy-five dollars, but the teachers in the classroom would get eighty-five dollars. We're hoping that that would, first of all, draw teachers to our town, also encourage our current substitutes and our new substitutes that we might get, kind of push them towards filling the teacher positions rather than the instructional assistant positions, because that's, of course, the more, you know, it's more critical to have a teacher in front of the classroom. The second page shows if we did that, had a two-tiered system, seventy-five dollars, and if we started, this, this, started paying seventy-five dollars continuing for our instructional assistants, but eighty-five for our teachers, this spells out what the cost would be based on assuming that the usage of substitutes is going to be consistent throughout this year, which is the only year for which we have data. This was done assuming a December first start with that dual, that dual pay rate, but of course, now we'd be, we would be talking a January start. So up top, if you've read it, it tells how many instructional assistance vacancies we've had filled, and how many teacher vacancies. And then the, the two middle pieces in the very center says the annual cost estimate, and, and we decided the eighty-five dollars in the personnel subcommittee, they talked about eighty-five, not ninety-five. So if we did that extra ten dollars per day, the annual cost increase would be fifteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars over the course of a full year. For the, for the remainder of this year, it's down below, and again, it would be scenario one, because it would be going to eighty-five dollars. And these figures, we have, we had to juggle them a little bit, it started on January, December first, the cost to finish out this year would be an additional eleven thousand one thirty. Now, if we started on January first, projecting the same relative subuses we've had so far, it would be about nine thousand six hundred dollars that we would need. The next, next page is, is the recommendation. The recommendation is for our, right now, we have a very loose and lax requirements for our substitute teachers. So what we would like to do is, is make it so that our substitute teachers have at least two years of college, an associate's degree or two years of college, or that they be current college students, majoring in education, at least in their junior year, and those students, those student teachers, subs, would be limited to grades K through eight, so that they would be at least four, five, six years older than the, than the children that they're standing in front of. So we would require our teacher subs to have two years of college, we would remain, the substitute instructional assistants would remain with the current qualifications, and they would stay at seventy-five dollars.
And that's the, that's the request.
So I'm going to let you fill in some gaps, but then before I take comments from the floor, Kathy and Lynn, Kathy is the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, and Lynn and I both serve on the Personnel Subcommittee, and I'm going to allow Kathy and Lynn to add any additional information about this, because it was discussed over a couple of meetings. And then maybe that will answer some of your questions, and we'll open up the floor, okay?
So I just want to fill in a, a, a couple of quick comments here. This is something we desperately, desperately need to do. We, we are trying so many different ways to, to recruit this year, whether it's substitute teachers, whether it's substitute custodians, we are trying so hard to build a pool. But you know, in conversation, for example, just with Center School today, just since we've come back from Thanksgiving, there have been ten times where they have not been able to fill these positions, teacher positions, just since Thanksgiving. And you know, our union, our, our teachers' union is saying, listen, we're, we're trying to help support, but we can't continue to do this. And I think everybody has stepped up to the plate to help, but this is a critical area of concern for us right now. And so I, I feel very comfortable with where we've laid it out tonight, Anne Marie, you did a great job, thank you so much, really did. You know, we just, we love having you as our, our Director of Human Resources, you do fabulous work for us. But to, to Chairman Ramosco's point, we've talked about this at the Personnel Subcommittee a number of times. And so, and I think that they've asked us to go back and revisit, rethink, reflect, and we've come back every time and had more and more discussions. So when we come to you tonight as a school committee, this is because we have collectively, as a team, the Personnel Subcommittee and the administration collaboratively in a partnership, have talked this through incredibly thoroughly, and we feel very, very comfortable in moving that forward tonight. So I turn to the chair, your thoughts on this?
I just, I want to echo what you said about Anne Marie and all the work she's done, and all the homework we've given her, and always with a smile, and comes back and brings us the data. It is an issue in many, if not every, school district, as Anne Marie pointed out. I think going to the ASOP system allows potential subs to register, register to be a sub, not just here, but in other districts. So changing the pay rate will make us more attractive financially, but this is an attractive district to sub in, period, because of the high standards, because of the, the students. So I think that would enhance our ability to attract people, and, and we will see over time. But the other thing I want to echo is the amount of time that the Personnel Subcommittee has spent looking at this issue and talking about this issue, as well as the other two issues that, that Anne Marie is going to speak to us about.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Lynn, did you have anything?
I, just finance people, we always ask, is it in the budget, are we, are we filling the budget for you or someone? But they, they feel they have money for it to cover it.
Yes.
It's not, whatever you think.
We're not hurting anything, that's the quote of the night. Good one, Lynn, that was good. All right, so you need a vote from, any other questions? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, everybody's like, wait, Nicole, Nicole.
Do you know of districts who are not having problems getting substitutes?
To see what they're doing.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, is in fact our problem not that we, we, you know, we don't pay enough? Because as, as Kathy said, we're a very attractive district in a lot of other non-tangible ways. So, you know, it, is, is the problem not paying enough, or is it something else? So are there districts out there that are not having problems getting substitutes?
Do you want to speak to that, and then I'll jump on?
No one jumps onto the listserv and says, oh, we have the answer, we don't have a problem with this, everyone commiserates. I think the, the problem of not enough subs is the problem of a good economy. You know, when the economy was poor, we had subs coming in about years, because people didn't have work, and they were happy to come in, you know, for however many dollars a day, so, you know, I mean, goodness knows, bad knows, right?
Yes.
But...
Does everybody have a job now, though, in there, I mean, is what I'm saying, does, is, is there a pool even out there? Or are they employed?
And we're not, we're not sure, but to your question, is this, is this an issue across Commonwealth, yes and yes. We are not the only people in this position. But I would say to you that, from, from my experience right now, I would say we're in more dire shape in this area than any other district I've been in. And so I, I question why, I'm hoping, but there's no guarantee that the money will be a piece of it. But certainly, I'm hoping that we come to you in maybe two months or three months, or four, back and say, you know what, it's made a difference.
Kathy?
Oh, just to add on, to piggyback, I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, but pointing to the, adding in the thing about college students. College students are on break from like now, until some of them the beginning of February, and this is a very lucrative thing for them to do in, in terms of a part-time job. I have a student teacher finishing up where I'm working in Concord, and she's looking for something to do. I said, sign up to be a sub. So I, I think that that has a lot of potential there, because the time they're free coincides with the time when a lot of people get sick.
Or vacations, yeah.
So hopefully, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, Neil, and then Jennifer, and then Mark, okay, sorry, because they were first.
Two very quick things, so we didn't discuss this in Finance Subcommittee at all, so we're not going to be able to have any opinion on this as far as the, well, because the extra money is being spent. And I look at this, and, and I really appreciate all the initiatives, and, and I, I realize you have some major challenges that are requiring extra infusions of cash and so forth, but I think it would behoove us all if we keep sort of a running understanding of what these extra infusions of cash are meaning in the long run, so, you know, some of the other things, so that we're able to track and find out what's, what's going on for this upcoming budget area. And I guess what I'm just saying is, we just don't have that perspective right now. This is just additional, but what's the total, you know, and, and we've got to go back to look at the previous budget to know what that means for the total amount for the year today. And I'm not, so I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not for this, I'm just putting that out as the caveat with...
So we know, we know, so what do we know? We know there's a critical shortage of substitute teachers, we know that.
Right.
We know that we, in the, in the Subcommittee, said to the administration twice, you know, is there money in the budget? It's not necessarily, I, I mean, I want, I'd love to know what line item, but given the situation that we're in right now with this forensic audit wrapping up, and a lot of questions about what's in certain line items, what we have been told is that there is money there, but identifying the specific line item is not necessarily something that we can do, but the money is there. So I just want to make sure, and I understand your sensitivity to it, but I also think that the Finance Subcommittee, wouldn't be the organization that would define how and where that money comes from? We would ask the administration to look into the budget.
No, we just don't have visibility or clarity on, on any of that, and I just, all I'm just saying is, because we have a lot of different initiatives where we do need to put an infusion of cash in there, and right now, on our end, we don't have a tracking method for being able to, and, and I guess that's what I'm saying, is it would be nice to be able to have that, to understand
Right.
what all this extra cash is going, where it's going, and how much is actually being required, so that we do have sort of a baseline that we can work from and say, okay, well, these, a lot of these figures are just, because you needed these extra things to work with, whether it's additional personnel, or...
I'm not sure if what you're asking for, though, is something that we, we could even provide for you. If you're, what I think I'm hearing you say is, where are those lines, is that what you're asking?
No, more like an understanding, I understand the lines, and I understand, but tracking what this additional costs are to us in order to get to where we should have been, I guess. I, there's a dollar value to that, and I think we should understand that as we go along.
And, and you know what, I'm just going to give you an example that will mirror, I think, with the facilities, additional unexpected costs in order to get the buildings where they need it to be.
That's a good example.
That Superintendent Clancy is going to share with us during her superintendent's report, and that's what you're looking for.
That, right, that's a good example, so we have an understanding on what, maybe this is stuff that should have been done, maybe the stuff that, that we should have, whatever, or because whatever reasons we have to...
Right.
And, but I think that we need to have some sort of running understanding of what that is, so there's, there's a reconciliation at some point for it.
Right, and, and so, so let me just speak to that, this is total, this is, this is truly down a rabbit hole, but let me, let me, because I think it's a good, I think it's a good question. So for example, now that we're, like, we are spending, as I said to Chairman Ramosco, we are spending countless hours in budget prep right now, like countless hours, like from the morning to the, the time we leave in the day. And as I was explaining to, to Mr. Jones earlier, we are literally going line by line by line with every unit in, in our district right now. And so, so in part, you know, as we're doing all of this, the, the infinite detail, we're also looking at the, the larger piece and saying, so for example, we have created a couple of different charts that we've been playing with, that we've, we're not writing into seventy at this, as, as I sit here tonight, but we've shared with Chair Ramosco, saying, we know that we're probably, for example, going to have X number of dollars overrun in this area, for example, legal. We can see this coming, so we're actually charting that right now. That's not the only area beyond facilities, but we probably have about five or six key areas right now that is administration we are monitoring, because we can see that these pieces are happening right now in our lives. So we absolutely, we actually have a spreadsheet that, that we're using to monitor that.
And so that's great, so I guess, what this does is, this breaks out when you give something to us line by line at the end, and we're able to look at budget versus actual, and we see that there's an overage. We understand, well, was it a special, one of those special circumstances that made it an overage, or was it because it wasn't properly budgeted to begin with?
To begin with, and that's the issue.
And we lose track of that if we don't have that, and so that's what I'm trying to, you know, say.
Right, right, and we, and so your point is, well, taken, I want to bring us back to your point, and I don't mean to shut this down, because you're absolutely right, and given where we're at right now, and all the work that's been going on, you're spot on.
Yeah.
And so we're tasking you at doing that, as you did with facilities, to do it with these other areas. And so, yes, I think everybody wants to see that, Susan's nodding her head, yes, please. So, yes, but, wait, a second, I want to really make it, because you've got three other members here, and we got to move on, so, quick.
I get that, so the vetting process, we talked about what the requirements are, but what's the vetting process that's not listed in here? I was just wondering what that is.
The, when new substitutes come on, do you mean?
Yep, whether it's, uh, security, query, you know, et cetera.
The, everyone, and also, including our substitutes, they have a query check, they, through the fingerprint, gives them the nationwide instead of their, and they're required to sit and be trained on our life-threatening allergies, and on all our policies, harassment, sexual harassment, all, all those things. So all, anything that our normal full-time employees would do, they get that as well, including the life-threatening allergies, query, and fingerprints.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, mine is just really simple, I just, sorry, it just, do we have a long-term rate?
When it's a long-term substitute, they go to, um, the first step of the bachelor's, the first step of the bachelor's, two hundred and fifty-six cent dollars a day. I have that here, let me just look.
So it's significantly more, it's significantly more than the other towns you were looking at?
So if somebody is out for a long-term, it's going to be out for three months, an illness, injury, maternity leave, or whatever, they go to the, they're two sixty-five a week.
So we don't have problems filling those positions?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark, wait, just, just because Mark hasn't spoken yet.
Just, I just want to finish up, and just, if this makes you feel, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding, because I was asking, say, so when the budget process comes around, these, what we've added, they're not going to say the budget's increased because we added this.
Well, I understand, but I, I totally am with you on that, it's just with the understanding.
I'm, I'm...
In general, what we've been adding to date, we're not going to, the budget season couldn't even say, we increased the budget because of these positions.
We need X number more.
No, we're not increasing the budget, we're finding the money in, in the per...
Right.
In fact, I think that's really critical, because that's what we talked about in Personnel was, are we going to have to go ask for more money? But the answer is no, because we're able to find the money in the existing budget.
But I, I think you need to be, have a caveat there, because you're in negotiations right now, and you don't know what those costs are.
We're talking about this, I don't want to get it, I don't want to go down that, because you guys, we got to pull it back together.
You're not going to come back and say the substitutes went up, so increase the budget.
Right, that's, that's the point, yeah, yeah. Okay, Mark, hit it.
At one point, does someone become a long-term substitute, how many days is a threshold?
I'm sorry, thank you for that question, they don't, they don't consider a long-term substitute, they can be gone for four weeks or more.
Four weeks, so essentially, twenty working, twenty to twenty-five working days. Just for perspective, if one were a scattered substitute at ninety dollars a day for a hundred and eighty days, your earnings would be only sixteen thousand dollars, so I think that will inform everybody as to why it's so hard to find somebody.
But not necessarily, because I know parents who have come to me and said they would, they want to do it, they rely on it as their income, but, so what's your...
So I think that's just a helpful perspective.
Okay.
How many people are willing to work for several districts for sixteen thousand dollars a year? Not so many.
People aren't getting rich by being a substitute.
Right, right.
They're not buying the next BMW, just because...
Okay, any other questions on this? And if not, does someone want to make a motion on this at all?
I will move that we accept the increase in the substitute pay rate from seventy-five to eighty-five, that's a recommendation, correct?
Tiered, and the tiered, right.
New qualifications, is that appropriate?
And adopt the new qualifications, including the one for college, for a college student, second.
Okay, Kathy?
And I move an amendment, that that number be ninety, that be considered.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I need second for my amendment.
So now we, we're voting on the ninety?
No, it hasn't been seconded and or voted.
Oh, does anybody have a second on the ninety? Oh, does anybody have a second on the ninety?
So. What is, what is that going to mean to the, to the figure? Do we have that?
It goes up.
Do we have that in there?
It goes up about five thousand.
Is the ninety on the teachers and the seventy-five is still on the instructional assistants?
That's what it says here.
Do I have a second on it? Once, twice?
I'll second if I can ask a question.
You can ask a question.
After I second, so I'll second.
All right, Nicole, second it.
Can we put on the calendar that we get a report out in three months, see if there has been any change in.
Oh my gosh, yes. That's very easy for us to do.
So you, so you need to put it on your calendar.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ann Marie's taking the notes to make sure.
Good.
Okay.
You want a report out regardless?
Well, yes. So the ninety is a thousand dollars more, you're saying, the year? I heard a thousand. Five thousand.
So you're going to go from eleven to sixteen?
And we don't really know where this money is coming from, is that?
We know there's money in the budget based on what the auditor has said. We don't know how much, we don't know where. But we know from the administration, speaking with the auditor, that there's enough money to cover this initiative and the other one that's currently in.
But we are going to be taking an extra five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
From something else.
Yeah.
Then I would like to vote on the first.
Well, wait a second, because we got, now we got a motion on the floor and we have questions we're going to take and then we're going to vote on the amended move, motion, right?
I want to go back and clarify though, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Clarify. I think Nicole, when you're saying that we take it away from something, that I don't, that's almost as if to say, well, we're taking it out of textbooks, for example, to, to do this. And that's, that's not the case. What we're saying is what we know right now is that there's money there that wouldn't take away, for example, from the children specifically. Do you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
And I do, and I do trust your judgment implicitly, otherwise I, I wouldn't show up week after week. It's just to keep on, as Neil was saying, saying yes to these things after things. We don't know right now, the budget is so amalgus right now.
Yeah.
And, and things are, are constantly moving, and I know that's just a product of where the administration is right now, but it's unnerving. And just because we, we just don't know a lot. And I'm not saying you're taking it from textbooks and honest to God, Brooke, I wish you would come to my house and run my household. I, I honestly, I honestly do. It's, it's just the, the notion that we keep saying we have money in the budget for this, we have money in the budget for this. At some point that has to stop. At some point, at some point, there's not.
Well, well, I hear what you're saying. Unfortunately, the budget that we've inherited and the visibility that we've had in it isn't there. What we do know is that the auditor has said yes, or we would not be, I would not be putting this on the recommendation. Wouldn't have passed Personnel Subcommittee at all if the auditor hadn't said yes. Because of the critical nature of this and the other positions that are in there, because that's coming up next, if there wasn't a critical need for it, we wouldn't be asking for it, but I'm not trying to convince you at all because I agree with you.
There's a critical need for everything.
Yeah, we're in a bad spot.
Critical need for everything.
Yeah, we're in a bad spot in a couple of different ways. And I think that's why they're bringing forward the things they are. But I think now, if there's another, if there are any more comments, because Nicole's point is well taken.
Yes, it's to Mark's, uh, Mark's amendment. Do we currently monitor, I'm sorry, I got to ask this. Do we, do we currently evaluate and have a standard matrix for evaluating the substitute teachers?
No.
Then I cannot support the increase.
Kathy.
To comment on Neil's question, it's up to the principal of the building to determine the effectiveness of a sub. And it's not, and, and that's, that's how, that's the way that it works. It's not, um, to anyone's best interest in a building to keep somebody coming in who's ineffective. So they would, I live the dream, my love.
Yes.
Um, the, um, they just, you don't request them anymore. Or maybe they're more effective in one building than another, but there are people on sublists who don't get called anymore.
We got to get our, we got to get our regular full-time staff evaluations all set before we get into evaluating superintendents, but at the date. What did I say? No, no, I'm not going through that again. Do you want to respond to that? Because it's not for me to comment.
Oh, Ann Marie, do you want to start and then I'm going to jump in? Yeah, you start.
My practice has always been that if a principal calls for the question about a substitute, we almost don't even, uh, don't even look into it particularly. It's not a just cause issue, they're not a member of a bargaining unit.
That's right.
If it's a serious issue that there's, that the principal calls me, we ask them, do you think it's specific to your building? Or do you think it's enough to take them off the list altogether? And we do it, and I make a nice call to them and say, couldn't be sorrier, but.
Right.
And then that's the end of it.
So the principals don't have access to A S O D, just, it all goes through you?
Oh, no, they have access to it, yes.
They do, okay.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I would, I would agree. And, and I think, um, I, I think if we were to add one more layer right now to our. Oh my gosh, I can't even imagine what that looks, what that could look like. But you, and you have some people that are going to be in the district for two or three days a year. I mean, you know, you're going to make the effort to make an administrative evaluation of that person? Or they're going to be here because they're looking for a job, they find a job, they take themselves off the list. I mean, it's, it's such a fluid group.
Agreed.
And, and again, I, I want to suggest that we need to keep in mind why we are here with this particular topic. And we are at a critical short, it is a critical shortage, and quite frankly, I don't think I've used that word, I don't think I've used critical since I've been here, like, with this. But mind you, to be honest with you, I'll use it the next topic.
Yeah, but let's wrap this up.
But, and, and I hear what you're saying, Nicole, I, I want to respond a little bit to that piece too. The bottom line is what you're seeing right now is me coming forward with positions that we have, we've, from my lens, are imperative to smooth running of this district. And whether it's accountability, for example, those other positions that we brought in, I, I can feel the dynamic changing already because we've got, we know what we're doing. We just, for example, went live today in three buildings on the new food services. Okay, that was huge, you know, so you can see these things now starting to come into play and you can feel that accountability factor coming into play. The other thing I would say, if memory serves me right, and I don't know that we've got an actual number on this, but I believe that this would be the first time, what I was told was this will be the first time in twenty years that this number will have been changed. So I, you know, this is not something that has come to school committee, I think, before, certainly any of, of you folks have been here, but this has been a long time in coming. So, you know, it is one of those things that you certainly have the opportunity to say, we're not making any changes. And Ann Marie and I will walk out of here and respect the decision and go back to the principals and say, that's what's going, that's what it's going to be. But I would tell you, my expectation or my anticipation would be that we will have more of the same. We will not have nearly the number of people that we need to man these buildings in this area. So I, I'm imploring that you take a serious look at moving this number up in some form or another. But if you decide as a group not to, Ann Marie and I will be very respectful of that and walk away and tell our administrators tomorrow.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, it's been amended and seconded.
You got to vote the amendment first.
Da, 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 da. Say it again?
You got to vote the amendment first.
That's what I'm going to do. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
So, and that is seventy-five dollars for instructional aids substitutes. Ninety dollars a day for teacher substitutes. There is another piece of it.
Qualifications.
And the qualifications are.
Students.
Um, um, as stated, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so seventy-five, ninety, all those in favor? Three.
Mark, Kathy and.
Kathy, Susan, Mark, all those opposed? Um, the motion failed. Do you get another motion?
Amendment, yes, the motion comes in.
Thank you, Esquire Jones. I'm so glad you're here. Okay, so, um, what are we doing now? Let's go back to the main motion then. Thanks for throwing that in there, you did that on purpose. Look at him smiling and laughing. Okay, so now, you know, you love it, don't you? So it's seventy-five dollars for instructional assistants, eighty-five dollars for teachers. And the rest of the information is qualifications as stated. So all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Superintendent Clancy and three months, you and Ann Marie will come back and tell us exactly how it's going.
She'll generate this report for us.
Thank you, nice job.
You're welcome. Can I ask a sort of general question on the topic? Um, have you had experiences in districts where you have floating substitutes which are on staff and permanent?
Yes, in fact, I instituted that in Winchandoo and it was, I found it to be very successful. I don't know if they're still doing it now, but we put a, a full-time substitute teacher in each building and they were basically the first person on board that was called. And then it was, it was very, very helpful.
Okay, so let's move on to the next topic because we're way behind here, but good discussion.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was just asking Ann Marie, she'll start with this.
Okay, request, request for four floater custodial positions.
This, this came up because we have problems with coverage, a couple of reasons. First being coverage in our schools on nights and weekends. We have quite an exposure to liability and safety. It's a, it's not a good system, um, that we have for the weekends. Also, we had very high overtime last year and our substitute pool for the custodians is, is, we've got a few more than we had before. But it's not like you can send a substitute into a new building without, without any preparation because they don't know where the MOPS are, they don't know the layout of the building. It's, it's, it's not something that you can walk in and do the job with any level of effectiveness if you're not used to being in that building. So the, in our current complement, we've got twenty-four custodians ahead in each town, in one of the high school, and then the, the nighttime custodians, and then one who works during the day, helping with the, helping with the lunches, either six to two-thirty or eleven to seven. The, the request is for, for what we would call kind of a floater, um, uh, handyman type position. Someone who would have a little bit higher level of skill in the maintenance than our custodial staff now. So that there's a squeaky door or, or, you know, some small thing that they would have the skill to be able to fix that. And also they would, they would float, they would know the school, they would work on, um, so they would have the school that they became familiar with. So they'd be more effective when they needed to fill in for a person that was absent. And they would, they would work on the Friday night shift so they could cover Friday evening activities. They would work Saturday and Sunday, and then they would work either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Wednesday. And the two halves of the district, so, um, here in the high school in Lancaster would have one of those two days. And then same thing up here, so that they could interchange a little bit, so they could use them where they would, where they were needed. There's.
Yeah, I was just going to say, one of, this, this is in part, I mean, we've, we've got multiple reasons for doing this. Um, and Ann Marie, feel free to jump in if I'm missing something here. Uh, but one of the concerns I had, I think I have approached some of you before, if not maybe the school committee at large, is that one of the concerns I have right now for the district is that we've got one individual, for example, that goes between Bolton and Stowe on the weekends and basically opens the schools and then does a little bit of work and then comes back and clean, you know, comes back to lock them up. And I, I feel that that's very unsettling to me. The union has also approached us and said, we're very concerned about this approach. When I asked, um, a previous folks who were involved or who made this decision, why did you do this? One of the reasons, well, was we were trying to save on overtime and a lot of times we can't get people to work overtime. That continues to be a huge, huge, huge issue. Uh, we have people that are out, we've got people now who are working so many hours and we don't have the, the, the substitute people to come in. And so they've got no choice, but they're staying on and we just, I, I lost one of our best in, in the district for a whole week with pneumonia and in part because he's so rundown. And so we have to take a look at doing something differently. I also feel that we've got a liability here in how we're doing it right now. I'm not comfortable with, with it at all in terms of exposure for the school district right now. So this is another reason why we're coming forward with this. The other thinking too is that when you take a look on one of your, one of your sublines last year, um, is, I, I know that we've had this conversation, um, again, at Personnel Subcommittee. The line itself is, was only budgeted at twenty-three thousand dollars, but the reality is that we were always spending upwards of a hundred thousand every year. So that, again, it goes back to the budget piece that's so frustrating for us right now as we're working our way through this. And you see, to your point earlier, Mr. Darcy, the notion of the real and the actual numbers versus the budget. And, and I suspect that that will probably find its way out in some form or another through the forensic audit as well. But nonetheless, here we sit and you can't deny, the fact is that when you take a look back over several years, twenty-three thousand dollars and change was never the amount that was being spent in the last several years. We looked at it and said, it makes sense that we just say, this is how much money we've been spending. It makes sense that we hire full-time people for this to help boost this. Maybe that will help, as we, we've stated before, we know that there's a morale issue at that particular level. We can help to support that. We can make sure that they feel that they've got the physical support in the buildings. And to your point earlier, Mr. Jones, this is kind of one of those situations, it's almost a hybrid, if you will, when we sat down and looked at it. It's literally putting people there, but gives them a couple of days. And when you take a look at, as, exactly as Ann Marie had laid out, how we can man the buildings, it kind of gives you a floater in the, in the, the two, the two communities at, at, at both ends of the school district that can help to come in. Right, you know, right now, if we have one or two people out, which is what we've had this week in one building where we literally had, the, the principal was sweeping the floors, sweeping the, the stairwells because they had become so dirty. And it's no one's fault, I mean, it's just children, that's what they do. It's, but, but our principals shouldn't be left cleaning up behind because we just haven't got enough manpower to do the job. So, um, you know, again, I, I turn to the members of the, the subcommittee, the Personnel Subcommittee to, to air your thoughts and your concerns. But this is another thing that I would say the, the Personnel Subcommittee had us go back and reflect, revisit, review on several occasions. This wasn't a one-meeting stint either on this particular topic. Um, and, and again, whatever your decision is, Ann Marie and I will respect that decision and walk away and either status quo or we move forward with this. But we, I have grave concerns if we are going, if the message you're going to send me is to continue to do weekends as we're doing it right now, um, because I just, I am incredibly concerned with that, so. I turned to the subcommittee too.
With the floater on the weekends, I, I didn't get this from, from the document. There is going to be coverage at every school that has, um, events going on?
We're looking at, at, between the, the communities and the high schools, so that's where the four come in, right? So one would be between Stowe, one would be between the Bolton buildings, one at the high school, and one in Lancaster.
And, and so, so someone would be at the schools on Saturday?
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Neil?
Well, that's exactly the point that we're talking about. So we can look at what was budgeted before versus what was the, what was the thing was corrected and how much that cost. And it's infuriating to know that year after year, knowing that the overtime is going to be at about a hundred thousand dollars as, as it's borne out over the years, to under-budget it like that knowingly. Because I think that also has the effect, I'm going to ask this question, what does that do to the current staff who may now have become to rely on the overtime pay that they've been collecting? And in effect for them, it's a reduction in hours, but also a reduction in what they're making annually.
So, so that's a great question, and I've got to tell you, we've actually had that discussion with union personnel in this room, with union leadership and with some of the people, well, in fact, all of the people in the room where this, this affected them the most. And quite frankly, overarching, because it's a great question, but overarching is, I really want to go back to having family time again. I want to have my life back again. Please stop the madness. And to be honest with you, the, the, not, not the fact that we are presenting the four. And to be honest with you, the, the, not, not the fact that we are presenting the four positions that we are to you. That specifically didn't come up, but the whole notion about the weekends and the fact that we are so understaffed. Was generated around this table by our, by our folks and by their union. But it was our folks first. The union was supporting, was supporting our folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, in the information you've provided, examples of overtime, that would remain notwithstanding additional positions. I understand Snow and Ice Clean Up Town Meetings, um, school events. But if anything that the school runs that takes in a gate, like the football games and other sporting events, um, perhaps. But most definitely, any outside agency events, um, wouldn't that, the costs, their rental costs cover the cost of overtime? We would not pay that.
In part, and that gets back to...
Why in part?
Sorry, well, in, in, I'm not saying, I think what you're suggesting, I'm guessing what you're suggesting is that we take part of that as an offset.
If an outside agency comes in, and I know that there's conversation about increasing the building usage.
That's exactly right.
And there was a comment in Masbo about it actually being an illegal use of chapter seventy monies. Um, to, to take away, to, to pay, um, for custodial services when that money should be going to kids. There was something in there to that effect. I might not have it exact, but that was the gist of it. So, so, um, why, I guess that would be my question. If we rented out to an organization that produces their own plays and, and makes money from it. Why wouldn't that part of their charge cover the cost of any custodial services?
Part of it could. And we've had that discussion around the table. So it gets back to the, the earlier question that Lynn always asks us, do we have the money, right? And that was one of the conversations that Pat and I had earlier too, is could a piece of this come from, from that very thing? But then that also gets back to the whole notion of doing offsets properly and appropriately. So that's something that I think that we would have to take a look at in terms of not just a blanket number, but exactly how much.
I, I don't think you understood my question. Maybe I wasn't saying it right. I'm not saying that we take money from an outside company that comes and puts out a play. As an offset to the overtime, like for Snow and Ice Cleanup. That whatever, the, the cost of hiring a custodian while they're there should come out of their receipts, not us.
Right, I, and that's...
And that's all I meant.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I was following you.
All right, all right, I'm sorry.
So here's the weekend people. You're not gonna have people renting the building during that period. So my assumption is, and you're not always gonna have activities going on, that that's why you're gonna have people that have maybe a little more technical skill. Cause you'll have a little laundry list of things that need to be accomplished for Monday morning. The squeaky door, the loose handle, the, you know, so those things would get done on the weekend when there is not. And then we would be paying for that. And then what you would do is you, when you rent it out, at least this is what happens in Lancaster and town government, when you rent out a building. The, you figure out the amount of, what you would be paying a custodian during that period, and that's part of the rental fee.
Sure.
And that's on the FinCom radar right now when we're talking about building rental and we're having, and hopefully that discussion comes up at the, the group that you're having. But what is the net, what, do you have projections for what the net, um, the net savings in overtime these positions are actually going to bring?
No.
In other words, you know what I mean? So if we're saying it's a hundred thousand overtime.
Yeah.
We're still gonna probably have overtime. How much are we actually gonna be incurring?
Well, you know, I think for a district our size, and, and that's a great question because one of the, one of the iterations of one of our meetings actually looked at that, didn't they? And, and said, can we say that there's gonna be no overtime? Because this, if you take a look at it, a hundred and three thousand, for example, that was spent last year. Only really, it doesn't equate to the four full-time positions. So you're still gonna have to pull money from somewhere, right? And, um, so from, from that lens, you can't, we, we had to look at it and, and ask inside of our, our own souls right now. And we said, okay, can we justify this? But we can't say that there's no overtime. Because you're still always gonna have some other things that you can't account for. Do you know what I mean? Like, like elections, or like whatever, you know, where you're gonna have to bring in some overtime people no matter what. So I, I wanna be clear that the, the four positions right now still exceeds what we spent in overtime last year. But I think this is larger than just, just these positions. You're looking at a, a staff that right now is not manned appropriately. And so we're losing, we lose a bucket of money. Like overtime is only but one issue for us. When I take a look at the amount of time that's lost, like just time alone. You know, where you can see custodians are taking a, a day or two here or there. It seems like every third day or every fourth day or whatever. And again, they're, they are tired. Like, I mean, I'm not saying all of them, but there are, there are, there are quite a few there that we're concerned about. Cause they're putting so much into their buildings. Okay, any other comments? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I said we accept these four positions as presented.
Second.
Second from Mark. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate this.
Okay, let's keep moving because I think if it's okay with everyone here. Superintendent Clutchy was going to discuss her thoughts around Director of Teaching, Learning and Technology Integration. But I think in the interest of time, because we've run over, I'm gonna, can we move this to the twelve-twenty-one agenda, please? Um, and so let's just jump right into Subcommittee reports. And everybody, thank you so much. I, I know there's been some heavier discussion points than we expected tonight, but, um, thank you. Um, finance, Neil, thank you, Anne Marie.
Um, yeah, so I think we've had two meetings, I think, since our last. And one was that we, um, we voted to adopt the, uh, time, timeframes on the goals. Which should be up and on the site at this point in time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that was the, the crux of the, the first meeting. We had some talk about revolving account report outs. And, uh, and how we'd like to see that possibly structured and so forth with the administration. And, and that was all positive. The last one, the last meeting that we had, um, we, we had, uh. Talked about the Toshiba copier, which is a pretty hefty purchase that's going on. And Pat was just, the administration was reflecting some ideas and negotiating process for the computer. And then, what else are we out here?
Oh, so then we discussed some of the reports that we were looking at. Some of the concepts of what the finance Subcommittee wanted versus what the, what we would present to the school committee.
Right.
Um, and then we discussed some of the policies issues that we need to, finance needs to come up with and looking at the Masbo report. And then in conjunction with the audit when we come through that.
Thank you. And we had a sample, thank you, until my mind got kicked in. Um, and then we also had a sample of both the year-end and year-to-date reports that administration's maybe put, putting forward. And we gave some feedback based on that and may have sort of like a second round.
So will that year-end report be presented at the next school committee meeting? I think it will do, honestly, I think it's gonna depend on the finance Subcommittee. I think when they're, when they feel comfortable with what we're ready to present then. But I think the, the message is that they've seen it now and, and they've made some, some very good suggestions, which I believe, Pat, you've already made the changes to. So she's already showed me the updated documents.
I do know Pat's not gonna be available for our next meeting, so the likelihood it would be, depending on how the meetings go, it would be two weeks.
Well...
She's gonna be in Boston.
So we won't get the FY sixteen...
We actually, well, we might meet twice before the next meeting, come to think of it. Cause we don't meet again until the twenty-first.
Our next meeting, school committee meeting, is December twenty-first. And I think we need to wrap up FY sixteen year-end report.
No, we're meeting once.
So I'll let, just, I'll leave that there for you guys to kind of try to figure it out because...
Maybe you can just give us what you found.
We need to close the books on it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We're close.
Okay, all right. And what else, Neil?
I honestly think that...
That was a lot.
No, I, I think that we, I, I think we're okay with the year-end. We had the suggestions that we had made for the year-end.
Oh.
So as long as she can, if she can leave that with us, I think we could make the decision.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you. So can you put that on the next agenda too?
Year-end report?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Neil. Jennifer, Mark.
Can I ask something of the finance Subcommittee?
Yep.
Just, I think just more to, to put it out to the public, one of the things that we had done in partnership, um, this is, I'm speaking as administration. Uh, in partnership with the school committee, uh, with this particular finance Subcommittee is we took a look at all of the areas. That we thought that the, the finance Subcommittee would want to look at, whether it was revolving accounts, grants, et cetera. And have actually mapped out a full, actually I see that he's got it right there, a full calendar for the year. So that, um, basically the finance Subcommittee will have had, uh, good visibility into every single component of the, uh, the budget.
So if that's what's gonna happen in finance, then we need to bring that to the full school committee. Cause the school committee needs to understand what's going on as well. And how are we gonna work that through?
Right. This is not the be-all to it, though, though.
No, no, no. It doesn't have to be. My point is that I wanna make sure, Neil, and I've talked about this before. That, um, and he's committed to it, I know. That whatever's presented to the finance Subcommittee needs to come back up to the full school committee. Because when we're making decisions and voting on things that cost money or have massive budget implications. If we don't understand what those things are, we're, you're, you're gonna be at a disadvantage for, you know, five of us.
Right, well, I think our plan was to have them present to us. We will ask the questions to try to narrow it down. So that when it is presented to school committee, it's, some of those questions have already been asked. So...
So when those individual components are not, we not gonna wait again till, we weren't here, but we don't wanna wait till the budget comes up to...
No, I don't think it's not, it's not conducive to anybody to try to do it all at once anyways. But, so yeah, so the idea, I think, was for us to maybe ask some of those nitpicky questions. So it doesn't have to be done here.
Similar to what we did in personnel. Okay, got it.
So the idea is that FinCom, we're gonna get the thirty-thousand foot perspective. And then we're going to send it up to the school committee at the fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So we'll get more detailed reports. They may be more like standard financial reports. But for instance, one of the changes we had was to remove the parenthetical, uh, you know, net gains and so forth. So that it doesn't read like a financial document, so that somebody could just read it, not really have financial background and understand that that's a net gain.
That's fine. And so then, Neil, when you guys get whatever the reports are that you get, they should be put into the school committee packet.
Right.
All of the reports. Because I think we're all gonna wanna be able to see it too. And then maybe we can ask questions of Pat, or maybe you guys could jump in. But I just wanna make sure that all the information's, we're sharing the love. That's all. Okay. Good? Are we good?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jen. Um, Personnel, Kathy, do you have anything to add?
No, just everything that has been covered is what we've been working on.
Okay, thanks. And CPAC, Nicole?
I have no report.
Okay. And Audit Advisory, Mark?
Audit Advisory is scheduled to have an organizational meeting tomorrow night. First meeting since last year. And our primary agenda item is to begin to think about an RFP for, um, seeking a new auditor firm. And introducing people to the, um, financial documents in preparation for the report of the audit for fiscal sixty. We're hoping to meet several times between now and the end of January.
So tomorrow, you folks are gonna be meeting, you're gonna be selecting a chair.
Correct.
You're gonna be identifying the scope of the committee.
I'm gonna actually review the charter treaty as indicated in the district agreement. And then we'll also take a good look at what, what our needs are in terms of putting them onto a request for proposals for new auditors to be put out. We hope January, more or less, so that it can start soliciting.
So Mark, when you come back to the next school committee meeting to report out. Can you, in that meeting tomorrow, share with that group or try to get some point of view on what is the most appropriate? When should we, the school committee and the administration, expect that we would need to have someone selected? An auditor, an annual auditor? Because I think people need to have, we, we've never really looked into this. So I think we need to understand, at what point should someone be selected so that they can get started, so that we can understand?
In general, it's a good idea to have someone onboard three months before the end of the year. So that there's, if they have a different point of view than your routines, the financial reporting area of the district can modify. And so that the reports are in alignment with what the auditor's looking for. So that's, that would be a rule of thumb in, in a desirable minimum, three months in advance at least.
Okay, that's good, Jen.
Do you want to give your consensus on that or just...
No, they're...
Talk about it.
No, because they're gonna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna bring forward a recommendation. And they're gonna explain why this, whoever it is, does their recommendation, and then we have to vote on it, and then they, they're off to the races.
We're certainly looking for advice from Pat Marone about that topic.
And that's a good thing. All right. Thank you.
Does it make sense to bring a sample out of P so that you guys can start on it? If you guys have...
Yes, there's one on the, on the documents for the meeting.
Yeah.
So the members have access to the most recent one.
Thank you, Mark. Um, did you have a report?
Well, we did meet last week, so yes.
Okay.
We voted to accept the timeline for the calendar for, um, the Subcommittee that we had never officially voted for. Yeah, we had never officially...
Oh, yes. And we've, we moved that off of tonight because we're gonna bundle that into the twenty-first?
So we're all set there. And then Anne Marie and Donna were there. Donna was there to talk about the alcohol, drug, tobacco, all those policies. We'll be revisiting that. And Anne Marie came to talk about the fingerprinting. And we'll revisit that as well. And homeschooling policy, we're going to be looking at again in January after.
Wow, those are good ones. Great. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Subcommittee reports are done. I'm assuming that the, uh, everyone reviewed the meeting minutes for November ninth, November thirtieth. And the warrants for December twenty-fifth and December twen, December ninth, and that everything is okay because nobody's heard any otherwise. So we'll assume that those have been approved. Martin? Oh, and the superintendent's report.
You know what? Yeah, it's not on the agenda, to be honest with you. I just wanna point that out.
It is.
It's not online. Okay, thank you.
Well, because you told me you weren't gonna review it.
It's not on the, it's on the...
You wanna do a quick report?
I wanna do a quick report.
I don't think that's gonna harm anything.
Thank you. I'll do just a super quick report out. Um, and, and actually, I, I think that Alida, you posted my report online, right? So I'm not gonna go through that, but I just wanna highlight one or two quick things. Uh, first of all, I know that we've had a couple of calls already wondering about school closure process for this year as opposed to other years. And basically it's the same. It's the same company that we've used for the last several years. So that will be the same. The only thing that's different is that I am used to, um, sending out phone calls and texts. And texts have not been a part of our process. And so we've reached out to the company and we can do that. Parents, you're gonna see in, in the next, probably within the next week or so, probably even maybe today. Sheets will be going home and you'll be able to opt in to receive a text as well as a phone call. Um, other than that, the TV stations will be the same. Everything basically is going to be the same as it has been. Uh, so I think we're all set to close schools. So just, just so that everybody knows that piece. The other thing is that I think, Alida, you've got copies there of a document there. Can we just ship that around really, really quickly? Thank you. Um, you know that we have talked before about the notion that our facilities update. I, I don't know if we ever passed, I think we may have passed one of these kind of around. Um, it looked a little bit differently. We've truncated it for, for tonight's purpose. But this is just, and I remember saying at that point in time, this is a living, breathing document. Uh, we didn't want it to really go a lot of places because for us it was just a working document. And I could tease and say it was a honey-do list, but that's really what it was. When I first came in, we had all of these things that we needed to take a look at. So I think tonight it was just a case to say, yes, it's still a living, breathing document for us. As well as this spreadsheet that I was speaking earlier about with Mr. Darcy on, on other overages as such that we're finding this year. And or Nicole, to your point, um, any other positions that we're looking at adding or what have you. So we really examined all that thoroughly. If you take a look, what's nice is you're gonna see the word complete under status with so many of these. Um, and, and so you can see all of the, the projects that we had worked on. What, what was interesting for me, of course, when Pat and I went through this, it was like revisiting our lives in the last couple of months. Because you think, oh my gosh, do you remember? And so for example, when we took a look at streamlining this, this particular document tonight, for example. I remember the very first quote we got on taking, removing all of the kitchen stuff. You remember? kitchen stuff. You remember that? And it was, I think, thirty-six thousand dollars. I don't know if you recall that. We literally have that not even on here, because we actually, we met, I remember Lynn, you had said, can you not find somebody here to try to take this stuff away for free, blah, blah, blah? And ultimately, that's where we ended up. And so, that thirty-six thousand, you notice, might, if you see an old one of these, is on there, but it's not on this one tonight, because we just took those things, those things off. Um, we are, um, it's not, it's not really reflected on here, but I think it's on the third or fourth sheet, I can't remember where it is, um, where, oh, sorry, second sheet, the second at bottom, uh, where it says general district-wide cleanup. And I've got a zero dollar beside that, although that's some of our own stuff. We kind of are doing the same thing, and we're cleaning up. Remember, we talked about the graveyard, we're kind of out there. We've been going around, well, we tease about that, but of all things that we're just kinda...
I think you're really good for how you have, but go ahead.
Well, areas, areas that have been growing in size of things that are broken or rusted out or of no value.
It's more of an installation, you know, and not just an installation.
So, we have been gradually cleaning those out and, and dealing with them, and so I, the message I wanted to send tonight was just that we are slowly but surely cleaning up those things. I know that we talked, for example, about one of the vehicles that was actually kind of in the woods, and we unearthed it. We literally went and pulled all the dirt away from it and unearthed it, so that we could send it, uh, send it away to, uh, car, with Cars for Kids, you know? So, those are the kinds of things that, that we're doing. Um, so, you can take a look through the list, your buildings or any buildings that you might have some specific interest on. Jeff, I didn't ask Jeff to come tonight. I just thought that we would just put this out there. We're still working, this is a living, breathing document, so we're still working on things. Uh, the leach field is one of the things that I pulled your attention to on the, the, the third page, because that's still an issue for us at the high school that we're still working on. Uh, that's, that's one of the bigger ticket items, you know, uh, that, that we're looking at. So, so that's kind of where we're at. At the, the very last page, I put the town of Bolton. I just, again, wanna give kudos. We wanna recommend that if you can attend the town, the special meeting that's coming up, uh, we, we really would like, encourage our Bolton residents to do that. We are so grateful to the town of Bolton for pulling these two items, um, off of the district list and taking it on as a community list, and so, so we're very, very grateful for that. So, I wanted to make sure that we added that, because of course, as you all know, the district did a lot of work in this area before we ever handed over, uh, the projects, or before it was even suggested that we do hand over the projects. So, kudos to, to Bolton. So, living, breathing document.
So, this document, were these, any of these expenses and projects in the current voted budget?
There were some. There were some, not all, but there, there were a couple there that we would say, yes, there, they were. And the other thing to note is that right now, as it sits on our books, everything that's in here that we've, that we've articulated is right now sitting inside of budgeted lines. So, there's nothing, there's no line there right now that shows a huge overage in the facilities. Everything is sitting in there right now. And Pat and Jeff, uh, with, uh, both Jim Brigham and Rob Fries, which have sat and gone through, and Michelle have gone through and mapped out like the rest of the year type thing, and looking forward to next year. So, they're just on the cusp of all of those means right now.
So, wait a minute, I just wanna make sure, I am, I wanna make sure that I get it, so that everybody else gets it too. So, some, some of the items on here were budgeted. Some of them were not.
Many were not.
So, give me a percentage, like twenty percent were not of these?
Because, and I'll tell you, I'll tell you why I don't wanna go down that road.
Well, let me tell you why, before you tell me why not. Um, because I think what I, what I need to understand is if there are in, unexplained projects that were not in the budget, but you're saying that there was money in the, is it in the facilities line item? So, there was, so there was money in the facilities line item that was, and these particular projects were not budgeted for this year, so we had more money in facilities, right?
We, so let me take it a different way. I mean, basically, what it did is these became the priorities, and anything that we might otherwise have done, wouldn't be doing, because these have taken the priority. And the reason I'm gonna go back to, to the other piece, is I had this brainwave one day, I'm sure there's a better way of saying that, but I had the notion one day when we were talking about the, um, Emerson Building with a leak, and I said to Pat, you don't think this might be covered under insurance, do you? And Pat, right away, called the insurance company and brought them in, and sure enough, some of this that was not planned for was covered under insurance. So, there was a percentage there, so that's the only, that was the only caveat that I would say, suggest to you. So, I can't remember, I wanna say, was it eight thousand that we got for that, from the insurance?
So, that's not, but that, that's not included?
That's not included in here. We're not showing that in here, because we're not showing the revenue. All this is, is our work in progress of the work that we're doing still, continue to do with facilities. So, we're not showing revenue on here.
Well, no, it wouldn't, there wouldn't, okay. Lynn?
Well, just quick, um, you've got forty thousand for boilers at Hale. Now, is that in our budget, or is that being on the stroke?
Let me just, what page are you on?
Uh, page three. You've got, um, Hale boiler, number one, which here, twenty-five-seven, and then Hale boiler head repair, fifteen.
Right. So, those, we did, so, these, these two numbers right now, um, have not, these have not been spent yet, so this would almost fall into the exact category that, that Lorraine was talking about earlier. Um, we have not spent this money. What we did do was, uh, move into Hale and do like regasketting and things that we felt that we needed to do in order to make sure that they ran smoothly for this year, but we didn't do the, the really big projects. But these are on, which is why they don't say completed or anything like that beside them.
So, were these things that came up when you guys came in and you saw, saw they were issues, or were these already budgeted?
No, these were not budgeted, these two.
So, these came to light since July?
Yes, to my knowledge, yeah.
Neil?
Oh, I'll make a comment after.
I think we need to wrap this up, so...
I, then, I'll make a comment, then. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, um, and you've mentioned this before, that your partnership with Don Lo in this matter, um, how key that was to actually getting the schools open in time, and I think, um, for the ten people that watch these meetings, uh, it's important that the residents of Bolton know, uh, the contributions that Don Lo has played for this school district in getting things done, that the schools probably wouldn't have opened if it weren't for him and the partnership he was able to work with you. Uh, and right now, he really needs the support of the residents of Bolton, exemplary, uh, for his rating and everything, and, and people need to pay attention, because we may end up losing him if we don't.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say, I agree. I, I, I won't be ever, you won't ever see me become political, but I would say that he is being, from my perspective as a superintendent, as far as a, a talented administrator goes, he has been absolutely exemplary. And I, I would suggest that, you know, the, the pool is not always that deep out there for people who are so, as good as he is, as exemplary as he is. I have thoroughly loved and enjoyed working in the partnership with him. He's been amazing.
All right. Thank you, thank you all. Okay, so, we'll continue this later, 'cause, yeah. All right, I think that's the end of this, um, regular portion of the school committee meeting, so I do need, um, someone to transition us. Mark?
Is there a well-formed motion or show like...
You may, you may say, I move. We enter into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to imminently threatened litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chairs of players, um, and that we adjourn the executive session, um, and adjourn the open session at the end of the executive session.
No, not to reach a convening open.
Not to reach a convening open session.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
A second.
All right.
Give a second.
Kathy? Um, Nicole?
Yes.
Oh, Susan?
Yes.
Kathy? Lorraine, yes, Mark?
Yes.
Ned, Lynn?
Yep.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And you? Okay, thank you all.